Ladies and gentlemen, sorry for the delay. We bring it back. It's welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, June 15th. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please raise your hand for a prayer.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for all that are gathered this evening and thank you for our township. Thank you for those that try to serve this township to the best of their ability. Give us all wisdom in these trying times. Let us all be lights in this darkening world, Lord, and forever protect this township and our country. You're having a good break.
There was one executive session held tonight before tonight's meeting. It's specific, East Kacau Township versus Willford Tax Collector and Baur versus East Calico Township zoning hearing board. This evening's meeting is being recorded for rebroadcast purposes. Tom?
This week, the Board of Supervisors received an application in addition to the township's agricultural security area. Property is located at Ridgewood Avenue, approximately 63 acres. As required by the state law, we're making the announcement that this has been received and we will begin with the processing of that application tomorrow.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a public comment period. There's a five-minute per person limit on agenda items only, please. If you'd like to comment on any agenda items, please come forward, state your name so it's easier for the meeting minutes.
Except for the public hearing.
Except for letter C.
We'll receive public comment in that period. So if you're here for the member or partner's ordinance hearing, we'll take comment at that one. So everything else on the agenda is up at this time.
Okay. Scene number, we'll move on to action items. Four A, meeting minutes, gentlemen, meeting minutes for approval. I had no changes.
No, I've got none either.
I'll make the motion to approve the August 1st meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, four B, proclamation 2024-01.
Talked about this before, but I'd like to make a motion to approve a proclamation 2024-01 recognizing the efforts of East Kacau Township volunteer Troy Tex.
I'll second that. Motion of second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, I'll give the floor to Attorney Matt Crean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. This is the day and time that has been advertised by public notice for a public hearing on ordinance 2024-04, which is a petition of Denver Road Partners LLC to consider amending the township zoning ordinance and zoning map. This is a hearing in which we are creating a record of testimony, so we do have a court reporter present. I point that out so that you know that we are keeping a verbatim transcript of everything that's being said, so consequently, we do ask you to help us and to help our reporter do that by only one person speaking at a time. And when the time comes, to stand and speak loudly enough so that we can all hear you. This is a legislative hearing. It is a request to adopt an ordinance which would have the effect of amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map. As I've said, it is a proceeding in which we receive public comment. It is not the kind of hearing where it's testimonial under oath. So the sequence is that the petitioner, Denver Road Partners LLC, will present the petition and present information that they wish the Board to consider in deliberating on whether the ordinance should be adopted or not. We will then have public comment and members of the public, residents or property owners of the township may offer public comment on the request. And the public comment that's most effective is in the nature of suggesting to the Board what you think the Board ought to do and the reasons the Board ought to do that. You think that the Board should approve the ordinance, or you think that the Board should not approve the ordinance and give the reasons for. So for the record, public notice has been given and groups of that public notice that needs to be filed with some municipalities planning codes are part of the township's official file on record in this matter. So as I said, this is the day and time for this hearing. Mr. Chairman, we may turn it to the petitioner for the presentation.
Welcome.
I'm Claudia Shanks with MBE Sales and Art. I do have some exhibit packets I'm going to hand out here while we're getting set up. I'm joined by Andy Miller. He's here on behalf of the developer in this town and his member of the partners. And also along with us this evening, we have two consultants. We have Drew Barton, who is with Livic Civil, the civil engineer for the project. And we also have Jason Wheeler with Traffic Planning Design. If you turn to the first page in your packet, and I do have a few extras here, if anyone in the audience is interested in the material, it's also in there in front of the room. If you turn to the first page in your packet, you'll see an excerpt from the zoning map that shows the existing zoning for the property that we're going to be discussing this evening. The property consists of three tracts of land. They're located south of the turnpike and north of Denver Road. They're in an urban growth area. They include a 2.6 acre tract we'll refer to as existing lot 1. That's an existing little home park. There's also a 19.3 acre tract, existing lot 2, and 19.5 acre tract or existing lot 3. Those two tracts are both located in the R2 residential district. We're proposing to develop the property with a combination of residential and industrial uses that would require a rezoning and several amendments to the tax improvements. If you turn to exhibit 2 in your packet, you'll see a copy of the plan that we have presented to you a few times already. This shows the development of the property with 208 apartment units on the eastern side of the site. They're spread across five four-story buildings with 40 units in each building and two three-story buildings containing 24 units each. The three-story buildings being on the southern part of the site, adjacent to the Northway Road. The western side of the site, which we're proposing to rezonate to I-1 zoning, would be improved with a warehouse facility. We're showing a 177,900 square foot warehouse building with associated parking and loa there. This project is impacted by a water course and we're proposing to do a floodplain restoration project as a component of the development. The characteristics of the site and the nature of the location of the floodplain require the development on this site to be up on the northern portion of the property, closer to the turnpikes, and that's why you're seeing it laid out in the way that it is. And we're working with land studies to pursue that potential for floodplain restoration. As I mentioned, Drew is here this evening. He is able to answer any specific questions that he may have about the plan. To walk you through the tax amendment and the rezoning proposal, if you turn to the third exhibit in your packet, you'll see the proposed zoning map. So if you compare this against the existing zoning, which is exhibit 1, exhibit 3 is the proposed zoning. We're eliminating the little home park zoning at the north portion of the property or the west portion of the property, basically bisecting the property so that the western portion of the property would be in the I-1 zoning district and the eastern portion would remain with the R2 residential district. We are also proposing some amendments to your zoning ordinance to allow for higher density residential development on the portion of the property that would be rezoned in part 2. And they really fall into three categories. So first, we are asking to increase the density to 12 units per acre, and that would only apply on lots in the R2 district containing 15 acres or more. The current high-density zoning district does not allow, and we're near this level of density and below the minimum recommendations of places 2040. And what we're looking to do is to allow higher density residential development in places where we think it is appropriate, and we think this is one such place, being right along the turnpike. We are also asking to reduce the parking requirements on residential or for apartment dwelling units on tracts containing 15 acres or more. The request for reduction is to go from two spaces per dwelling unit to 1.5 spaces per unit. And Andy will present some information in support of that request in a moment. Then finally, we're asking to increase the building height. And again, on only R2 tracts containing 15 acres or more, we are seeking to increase the maximum building height to 65 feet, which would allow for a five-story building. We have presented this petition to the county and the Township Planning Commission. As the Board may recall, there were originally some other elements that were proposed as part of this tax amendment relating to the site condition, these setbacks and buffering. The Township and the County Planning Commission were supportive of the items that are before you this evening, did not support those other items, which is why we threw them. There's one caveat to that. The Township Planning Commission did not take any action with regard to the maximum building height. They were not necessarily supportive of that, no one really wanted to take action with regard to that. They did support the density increase as well as the reduction of parking spaces. When we were last over the board, there was a discussion when it came time to advertise this hearing, there were questions asked about where else in the township this development or these amendments could impact development. If you turn to what's the market exhibit 4 in your packet, you'll see a copy of the zoning map where we endeavor to point out to you where this type of development could occur. So what I've done with this map, you'll see the development site and the existing zoning, obviously, is depicted on the map. The colors are not quite as bright as they typically are ahead of the fade and background that you can read the text on top, but you'll see the development site is labeled and also labeled as a possible development site. That is land which appears to be in agricultural use today, but would qualify containing 15 acres or more. In some cases, you would combine properties here to achieve that, but 15 acres or more, so potentially you could have the higher density residential development on that track as well, basis 222. There are not any other tracts in the township that this would apply to. I am aware that the Board, I think it for last meeting, rezoned the property along the line road to I-D-C residential for R2. And that is, I believe, under the 15 acre requirement. But in any case, those are the properties that this would apply to. If you look elsewhere on the map, I know there were questions about existing developments that are working their way through the approval process and whether this could be applied in those situations, so I did try to label based off the list on the township website that showed the development for any approval process. I tried to label those, La Bash Land Acre, Crossing, Calico, Grande, and Village East Calico on the map. Those are all located in the R1 zoning district, so the tax amendment would not apply. They don't have to correct the zoning in order to use this tax amendment. With that background, I'm going to turn it over to Andy, and Andy will walk through some more specifics of the proposed development and the tax amendment.
Thank you, Claudia, and thank you for your time this evening. So just to kind of reiterate some of the presentation we've had before you at previous meetings, the goal of the residential side of the development is really for, to be affordable to a middle-income worker, workforce, as you've indicated you need in the township. And that middle-income target range could include, you know, warehouse, factory employees, other professionals, police, fire, EMS, teachers, healthcare workers, you know, other professionals. We have been talking with apartment buyers on this site, and they've given us some good feedback, which I'll get into, like you had asked previously about sizing and pricing and so forth. We're currently not exploring any options for a low-income housing or a housing tax credit type of development. That's not something that we're seeking for this. These were likely to be more of a middle-income type of housing, dwelling for the apartment areas. All the apartments, we're looking at a mix. So within a building, you know, you would have approximately 45% be one bedrooms, 45% be two bedrooms, and then a small percentage would be the three bedrooms, approximately 10% of that building. So weighted more towards the ones with two bedrooms. What that does from a square footage standpoint, obviously, keeps some of the rents a little lower. Again, in some of our research with our partners, we're ballparking. That rents could be somewhere between $1.25 and $1.75 a square foot for this. You know, again, we're kind of looking at present-day data, but we're kind of projecting it out several years too. You know, and as we've discussed also, in all reality, if today we have the zoning we needed, we'd be still three years from putting a shovel in the ground and being able to turn any leases on property. So there's a significant amount of time that through the land development process and so forth, if you could grant relief requested and tax amendments. So that gives you a rough idea of what that rent how it would be on a typical medium-income unit. Just as we've discussed, and there's some sample images in your packet I'll go through here as well, some things to think about along with that price point, you know, with a lower price point, you have fewer amenities. So we're not looking at a clubhouse, a swimming pool, and, you know, pickleball courts. And all some of the amenities that some of the larger, more medium, higher-income developments would advertise to gain, but we're still looking to try to build something that's very attractive. So if you go to Tab...
Pie.
Tab pie, thank you, in Claudia's packet. I'll just walk through some of the images that, some of the photographs that we took of some existing facilities. If you start with the first image, that's of three-corner apartments in effort township, you know, a very standard three-story walk-up type garden-style apartment, which is where our three stories would be sitting like that. Oh, thank you, Claudia. You know, typical finishes, nothing high-end or anything on those, but still very nice looking. Quickly, here's the next one. This is a complex under construction in Penn Township, Penn Township, Lancaster County. Harvest Apartments is what it's called. Again, a very similar three-story style apartment. Next photo is a four-story. This is a Blue Ridge Apartments over in Lower Paxton Township. This is a brand-new product that's been built. Again, you know, a nice-looking facility, but not a high-end this one, because their target is also a middle-income class. Next photo is Signature Flats in Hershey, Derry Township, Chalfont County. These were completed not too long ago. This is a four-story application. Again, slightly higher on the price point, just being that Derry Township Hershey area, you can see the building facade is closer to the line here, but it's kind of attractive, nothing too high-end. And then the next photo and the last photo is a five-story complex, North Formall Gardens over in North Formall Township. Again, a brand-new facility that's been being built over the last couple of years. This would be very similar of a five-story facility that would be built, maybe less brick, convert the price down a little bit, but again, that would be similar. I know there was discussion and concern about what the facilities may look like and, you know, that type of thing. So we went around, we photographed some that are built that we think are very representative of our apartment over there too, and just wanted to present those to you this evening. The last item that we had included, since there also was some discussion with the County Planning Commission and your Board of Members regarding parking, just wanted to highlight in Tab 6, in Claudia's packet, is a parking study that we had prepared by Traffic Planning and Design. We asked them to basically analyze a number of apartments in our complex and then look at the other parking studies that they did for the ITE manual. They give a comparison of what those, the parking of those are in their study versus what we're proposing here. I think it bodes well to show that the 1.5 space meets the requirements of what they have found in actual day surveys, which is approximately 1.29 spaces per unit. So we're higher than that. The ITE has several categories for the parking and apartment styles, so we have wanted to try to accommodate on the one that exposes to our community. They actually give, ITE identifies as an average peak parking demand of 1.27 spaces per unit. So there's some fluctuation in some of the numbers from ITE versus our county, so even will be requested, which is higher than what our actual town was. We also know there's been discussions with your traffic engineer. We've had some emails and shares that have been shared with you about air review. We've responded to them and reviewed Mr. Schiff's analysis of this review of our parking data. Parking and adding overflow spaces, specific spaces for handicapped residents versus visitors, visitor spaces, delivery spaces, we feel we can accommodate all that, and that's really more of a land development item that we hope to get to at this stage. We have a little bit of room left to be able to add in that extra capacity, those visitor spaces, some of the things that he agrees in his email. So we don't feel there's any deal killers in that. We have some space to make those parking combinations. And kind of everywhere you go and every complex, you know, the parking just seems to be a little different situation based on the number of visitors and so forth. And we also have our traffic engineer here if there's any specific questions on county vehicles and parking lot, which is how the actual parks in the town are done. So with that, I'll turn it over to Claudia, and then we're happy to answer any questions in the next one.
Yes, just a few additional remarks. So this petition, this proposal really is in response to a desire that's been expressed by the Board to have a wider range of housing options available for residents and different points of affordability in the township. I will emphasize that I think that these three components, the building height, the parking, and the increase in the density work together to allow for that increased density to occur. Again, this amendment has very limited availability. We're really talking about two locations, both adjacent to major roadway networks. And these are areas that are specifically designated by your township for this type of high-density residential development. So by permitting that development to occur in those areas where it's appropriate, you are in effect eliminating sprawl and protecting agricultural areas to lower-density residential areas elsewhere in your township for that type of development would not be appropriate. So I would encourage you to consider that balance as we look at this tax amendment this evening. We're certainly happy to answer any questions that the Board has.
Just for everyone here, you said 12 units per acre is much higher than the low number that it is. What is the low number? From a density perspective?
Maybe you can get to eight, maybe, or seven and a half. I'll just say eight.
Seven and a half.
Yeah. Actually, I think it's currently six, and you can get to eight with the village overlay, and seven and a half would be the recommendation from the county.
And you're asking to move to 12?
Correct. And I would say seven and a half is the median recommendation from the county within our rural areas. So obviously, in areas more rural, they're looking at higher densities than that. That's been worn out in some of the rural areas.
We frequently see that aiming for the maximum and allow density is sometimes not possible because of other development features, not much of a level of confidence that a bunch of engineers are playing, that we're going to get close to this density.
I can answer. Yeah, I can answer. I think, well, that's why we did, we spent so much time and effort on the sketch plan that we presented. You know, as I had discussed last time, you know, that balance between the number of density versus the right amount of parking spaces versus the amount of impervious, also remaining, you know, compliance with area homeownerspace and other things. So I think based on the concept that we have, we haven't nearly maxed out from our comfort level. The other thing, not only is it the density in the ordinance, but it's what the market can absorb, and what our apartment folks are telling us is a good amount of number for this area.
I would say we push the density up to try to accommodate some of the requests the Board has asked. So it's not a guarantee that you're going to get 12 units per acre. It could facilitate a lot of that, but that's part of the reason that we're also showing you a mix of three, four, five-story buildings, because you may end up with three-story buildings here, depending on who comes in and does the development and wants to construct. So it's not a guarantee of 12, but that's what we're shooting for, maybe some number less than that, but in any case, it would be better higher-density development, it might be a lot more valuable.
Yes. And again, it's that if we had a crystal ball and we knew what it was going to be in three years, let's say we're already at lease, you know, we'd make this discussion a lot easier. We're trying to just make sure that we have that ability. Hopefully, the market's there, we can get the density, we can build the, you know, as we have in plan, the five stories, the three stories and so forth.
And does the request to reduce the minimal number of parking spaces help you get the density?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, because it helps with the impervious factor chap, but what I'm also hearing is that as many municipalities are trending towards no parking requirements, having to demonstrate what you need, the one and a half, you are considering a minimum that you can accommodate other perceived parking needs as identified by the traffic engineer.
Yes, yes, you're correct.
And in fact, the plan now shows about 20 overflow spaces, so we're over that now.
The target market for these units is a middle-income. Do you know what the median income target for the county is?
So I did a little bit of research on that, and this is just kind of what I gathered from a variety of sources, so I wouldn't say this for many particular works or individuals out of it. It looks to me to be about 80,000 was considered the AMI for Lancaster County.
That's what I understand it to be, too.
Yeah, and then the workforce housing component of that, they were looking at 60 to 120% of AMI for what would be considered workforce housing. So that would be between 48,000 on the low end and 96,000 on the high end, which seemed fairly high to me. I'm thinking more that 40 to 60,000.
And my research is those are household incomes, not individual incomes.
Sure.
And it's the median, meaning that as many people as there are, make less than that, make more than.
Correct.
And these are not restricted or income-qualified, that's just your target number.
Correct.
A millionaire wanted to live here with a lease of one bedroom apartment. Absolutely.
So you're saying $1.25 per square foot to $1.75 per square foot is the target?
That's our range right now, yes.
What's the target size?
So on the rough footprints and not being specific to any apartment builder or operator, the one-bedrooms are approximately 850 square feet. The two-bedrooms are approximately 1,200 square feet, and the three-bedrooms are approximately 1,300 square feet. So the 1,300, the three-bedroom rather, you don't get that much more space, you could physically have a combination of smaller rooms.
So if I just went with the median, a buck fifty a square foot, we're still looking at rent factors on our small apartments somewhere around 1,200, 1,300, 1,400 bucks.
You're correct.
And that's if it's $1.50 a square foot. And that's if it's a dog fifty a square foot. So that's $1,400 on your smaller. Again, we talk about affordability, $1,400 for a small apartment.
For somebody who's making, when we're talking about it and they need support to talk about it in real numbers, and the target estimate is making $50,000 a year, $1,400 a month is going to fall under that 30% target, you know, for house spending.
30% of income being comfortable maximum for a one bedroom apartment.
I'd say those numbers would be true probably six or seven years ago, but today, $50,000 is a little robbery. That's just my personal opinion. In the last two years, the average family is spending over $7,500 for the same goods every year. So I still have a, I have a tough time grasping the $1,400 rent factor for the one bedroom apartment. I understand the cost of building it, but I'm just, you know, so you can't do it for free. Then obviously, at that, at that point, the concern, not concern, but then you're looking at as a builder, you're going to get subsidies and everything else, and the only way to do that is to look at other avenues probably. But I'll move on from that. You know, your parking, your parking study is all fine and dandy, but why do they, why do they not do anything on Sundays when most cars will actually be parked?
Yeah, Jason Mueller from T P D.
Good evening, Jason. Yeah, I can speak to that. So we typically only really evaluate the weekday period, you know, it's a Monday through Friday, and then we also do a Saturday period. The observations are done between midnight and 4:00 a.m. to ensure that that is typically the highest parking demand time period for the facility. We also will check I T E Parking Generation Manual, which is a massive compilation of parking demand observations from various studies, because they do have data for Sunday, but it's very limited. Their data for Sunday is actually right in line with all the other data that we had. So their Sunday data for multifamily housing with two plus bedrooms is 1.16 spaces per unit.
Is that the average rate?
That's the average rate, yes.
So it lasts the whole days of the week?
Yes, Saturday comes in at 1.18. And then for a typical weekday, it was 1.27.
We're also looking at actual operating apartments.
Yes, all of them are operational.
And do you know what the occupancy were for one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom? Are they one person, are they two persons, are they two persons with children?
I don't have information regarding the family types that are in residences, but we base our calculations on the number of units that were occupied at that given time. So for example, you might have a 200 unit apartment complex, but we aren't doing a base or ratio on that if there are some vacant units on the site.
I'll also say the I T E data that we're presenting, there are, the way the I T E is organized, there's various different land use types and how, that's how they calculate the parking that will be required. So the data that we're using would apply to a low rise apartment building with two plus bedroom units. So it's a conservative calculation because we're obviously going to have some one bedrooms, 45% of the units will be one bedroom. So we're using data from apartment buildings that have more bedrooms per unit than what we're proposing.
Obviously, parking is affected by, the need for parking is affected by how many adults you have occupying property, town property. Getting to that number is sometimes difficult. I've heard testimony from both high real estate and from landlord opponents on the question of school age children, which is some indicator of the number of adults. That per hundred, that for properties such as this, per hundred unit apartments, 12 school age children across the school years of kindergarten to 12, which is an indicator that you don't have a lot of families, you may not even have a lot of two beaten alive and so forth.
Right.
I did look at some data on that just today, Matt, that I pulled from the National Association of Home Builders, and that's consistent with what I've heard in the past too. There's usually not a lot of school age children in apartment complexes like these. For large multifamily apartment buildings containing 20 or more, the ratio that this study presented 2020 found was 0.14 more children here. So when you read the map, it's not a lot of children.
You expect that point of tenant in a townhouse group.
Correct.
I know seeing John Schick's response, I guess, to your Friday email raised a lot of, there's a lot of black and red on the email showing all 100 questions and answers he's requesting.
Sure.
And obviously, we're meeting today, so we only got this on Friday. It raised a lot of questions and obviously Tommy won't have all the answers yet because I've been asking back and forth. Previous meeting, I had asked the question, I think we were at Stevens Fire Company, is it, is it still a deal breaker without the warehouse if it's all zoned as it is or two? I know you guys were looking for the late industrial portion of it, because you said it had to happen, or would it make sense for the apartments?
So there's a couple of things in play. First off, we think it makes sense to have industrial in the area. It just makes sense to have industrial. The industrial helps pay for the floodplain restoration work. We think the floodplain restoration work is very important on this property and very important just environmentally and practically. As I also said before, the cost of floodplain restoration versus underground stormwater, surface ground, surface stormwater, whatever it may be, really ends up to be about the same cost, but floodplain restoration makes sense in a way. So, and the significant cost of that and permitting effort through that, the industrial helps carry that. That then leads to bringing down the cost of the apartments so that background isn't as expensive. You can offset some of that cost and then the apartments become, you know, more appealing then because you've got some offsets throughout the project. If it were not rezoned and the industrial were not to be built, you would then have to get apartments over the entire project area to carry the cost of that floodplain restoration, which is very difficult when you're trying to down target medium workforce, whatever term you want to use, more of a mid-level housing. It's just tough to spread that cost out. Apartments are not cheap to build. Anybody who tells you they are, I don't know how they're building, but they're missing something. So just with, you know, the cost of labor and material and everything, they're not a cheap one. So we really do need the industrial to carry it. Again, it goes back to, I don't think industrial of the entire segment says. I also think the absorption rate and the need for a full build out of the entire segment of the apartments, we don't think that's their idea. We think the number we have makes sense at a higher density, it helps suppress it. We think the industrial makes sense given the location, the industrial nature of the area. So we think that they complement each other and it makes the best use of them.
But if it wouldn't get rezoned, would we still be talking about this property?
Yeah, I mean, our partner, he's owned it for years, he wants to develop it, he wants to see something happen. Would the apartments look different than maybe they, what we're presenting, potentially? We have to go back and look at that. We have to read our numbers, we have to look at performance differently. You know, right now, we're contemplating the rezone, you know, holistically of the whole project. If you scrap the industrial, the million dollars eventually, you'd have to look and see, see what you get.
You made a comment earlier about there's no current plans for it to be low, I forget how you exactly worded it, but I'll just lowly in the mountain.
Correct.
No current plans for that to be the case, there's no request for grants, there's no pressure for money. What's to stop that from happening after it's rezoned or the amendments are made?
Nothing, nor could you stop it from happening anywhere.
The investors that we have on the project and the apartment builder that we would have, that's not their target. It would be a tough catch for, obviously, with that in mind.
Also frankly, those tax credits that you're funding are extremely competitive. So it's not like it's easy, it's not like they're handing those out. There are a few developers in the area that do that type of housing, but it's hard to get those credits and, you know, I think it's very unlikely that that would be proposed here, but it's possible, just like it's possible in our suburban housing, real offer, essential.
So the record reflects some sort of scale of the industrial portion, approximately 130,000 square feet.
That's correct.
How does it compare to the new 300?
Yeah, about half of 300.
This would be about half that.
I believe that's correct. Without knowing the number off the top of your head, it's a drop in the cap.
The one next door is 300 on the 7,000 square feet. So just to reiterate, the whole entire property is R2. So if they were to come in here and present a plan with three story apartments all over it, you're not shutting it down because it's zoned for that.
From at least more than 20 years ago.
And that zoning was on over 20 years ago, I think it was 23 to be exact.
2003, last time.
2003.
And again, as we get into public comments so that folks understand, the consequence of your request would be the warehouse repotting, more apartments per acre and fewer parking spaces overall. Without the rezoning, as Lorenzo points out, you could still build apartments, you would build the apartments potentially across the entire property, so you potentially have the same number of apartments or even a greater number of apartments, just not...
Just inefficient maintenance.
The density per acre would be elevated and you would have more parking spaces, more parking lots. Can we open it up for comment? Correct. So ladies and gentlemen, one of the things I regretted to say, that you may have heard or discerned from some of the questions, before the board tonight is a request to amend the zoning ordinance and that. The plan is not under consideration for approval. The plan is presented for purposes of illustrating what the effect of adopting this ordinance could be. If the ordinance is amended, this is the sort of development that might be put on this property. But no guarantee that it will work like this as it's, some of the questions that were asked as its engineer, we might find that it's different, buildings move, et cetera, or somebody could want to do something completely different. It's, it's an illustration of what the effect of the adoption of the ordinance is, what's under consideration is, in certain cases, the potential to adopt an ordinance that could reduce the plan that was on the state. If that makes sense to you, we'll try, we'll try to address your comments if there's any confusion that you have. So who wants to, who wants to comment? We're going to ask you to come to the lectern, change your name and address some of your comments. Don't be shy.
So Nate, Nate, sorry, Greg Urban. So I gather from what you guys said, it's all leasing, right? No privately owned units.
Correct.
Well, and we've established a median lease price of about $1,400 a month?
Probably.
Will there be any, well, it's not an H A, but a maintenance fee above that?
I can't comment on that, I'm not sure. All the times we have, the operator wants to handle that.
Okay. And so since all the units are leased, is there, is there any management company presence on the property?
Typically, yes, with this number of units.
Now, one of the things I would say is, that's what this developer is planning, but apartments are apartments, are apartments. If the developer wanted to do a apartment condominium, it would look the same, but the units would be owned by the occupant. That's permitted under our ordinance. We don't regulate in zoning, who owns or occupies the unit, we just regulate what the unit is. Anyone else? I just wanted to encourage the board to consider keeping the zoning as its current zone, although the apartment selling, what we get if there's another warehouse. And so I would like to encourage the board to leave the zoning as current zone and not to encourage the warehouse, to increase the warehouse square feet, which means we... Anyone else?
Alan Maxwell. Got a couple of things that are concerning with this project for me. Number one is the amount of traffic that is going to put into the intersection, Colonel Harrow or... It's already a busy intersection, it's already an intersection, it's a dangerous intersection. By putting this many housing units and a warehouse back in there, we are going to severely increase the amount of traffic trying to access 222 or the turnpike. That intersection's not designed for that. The other thing that I'm concerned with is if we go ahead and move forward with this and you improve the increase in height, how is that going to impact future projects and how is it going to look for the township? We're going to lose the aesthetic we have, the curb appeal that we have of a friendly, inviting township. It's going to look more like, you look at Lancaster, the area around 222 and 3rd, 772, Worce Town Road, that area there, that's all you're seeing is these types of buildings going up, and it no longer looks friendly and no longer looks inviting. That's very concerning to me. One other comment, they said Creek Corner, that was one of the units they looked at. I have a friend that lives in Creek Corner, just on parking Saturday and Sunday, there are no parking spaces in there. The place is packed. So they're saying, well, there'd be plenty of parking on Saturdays and Sundays, I think that's a big issue. You're going to have to keep parking wherever. In my opinion, I would recommend that the board do not approve this, to leave things as they are for the time being. If at the time these things can be addressed and we can move forward, maybe that'd be a different thing to look at. But in my opinion, as a resident who travels that intersection a lot, I don't want to see this changing to allow this project to go forward. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sir. I would agree with the other fellow. I travel that road every day to go to work. I work in Lancaster, Adworth, Chatham, and I also see the project on Route 30 off 222 there, and I'm not in favor of any of it. So I would just recommend that you all believe that there's wages, yeah, and then maybe move forward from there, but I would just recommend you believe there's leasing.
Anyone else? Sir.
My name is Tom Johnson. I live in Denver on 360 Main Street. I agree... I agree with the last three gentlemen that spoke. Okay? The one thing I didn't hear, and everything they spoke, it's true, I'm against it because of aesthetics and everything. But the main thing I'm worried about is school taxes. We are already at Calico, one of the highest school taxes in the county. So now we're going to have to spend more money to add to the schools for all these departments. So I agree with what these last three gentlemen said. Leave the zoning the way it is, but I'm not for any variances for five-story buildings. He said it's only for three stories, and that's already approved.
It's not approved, that's what the zoning is.
Well, that's what it is. I mean, something with more aesthetic value and no warehouse, that would be four. For five-story, they're not very nice looking. People come down here from New York City, from New Jersey, from Indy, Allen. They'd like to take rise out into the country. They want to see the rural area. They probably want to get away from this kind of thing up here in New York or New Jersey. So I just think going through this project on a beautiful way is going to be a very good thing. Thank you.
I've not addressed one of your comments about that. Last year at a regional leaders meeting, that's where the whole Calico School District comes together, the leadership, elected officials. The question was asked of the superintendent of schools. What does the enrollment base and the percentage of enrollment? Her report back to the group was that six or seven years ago, they dropped in enrollment in the Calico School District of ironically 6% or 7%. And it has not recovered since. And I viewed that as that's excess capacity that's sitting there waiting for more students to come back.
How long ago was this reported to you?
This was last year.
I actually, you could say that it was reported to yourself if you look at it this year, because there's a lot of new people coming into our area that can't even find housing. But it's okay to have, except three stories if it's part of the plan maybe. But I don't, I just think there's going to be a problem with schools. There's taxes that are going to be, they're going to have to add on. That's how I feel. I mean, we said, we heard that last year.
Right. The kind of actual homeschooling. Those statistics.
Absolutely. It's high.
The population of the schools started to decline during the great recession and we haven't recovered since. Anyone else?
Sorry, just real, real quick, so Greg Urban. Planning devil's advocate, did we not say that in one and two-bedroom apartments, that the number of children would be pretty minimal?
And again, that's part of the statistics that we've been hearing since the recession. Anyone else?
It's Tommy Stover. I'm for the project because anybody who's been around this township long enough knows that's the original industrial area of the township. So putting another warehouse to me is just out of order to the original industrial part of the township. The ones who set up one-to-five-story apartments, as you guys stated, it's all residential. So those same five-story, it's spread out amongst the property. So it's going to, you know, the same amount of purpose, the same amount of people. So I'm just for the project. Well, that's it.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Laurie Zimmerman Stevens. I just want to affirm what the residents who are living in that area have said. First of all, I'm kind of puzzled on the decrease, the decrease in parking because, I don't know, show of hands, how many of you have more than one car at your house? I mean, I can't see the apartments.
Three to five.
Yeah.
How many have more than one car at your apartment? Okay. A lot fewer.
It's a little bit of our school district capacity. I can hear what you're saying, but I can say as the proud grandma, my one daughter-in-law is responsible for now six children in this district. And, you know, there's more coming. So, you know, it's, I think we need to grow responsibly. We have seen, kind of have a lot of warehouse space. We are in a county where there is high-density housing. And my township is a perfect example of what can look good and what can look really not so great. And I...
Like, for example, that R2 was in Calico, 222, and now all of them. And 222, that's my neighborhood.
Yeah. And so it's, three-story, you know, Creekside Corner looks great, I used to live in that area. But I also heard the parking story, so people are parking at the high school. You know, kind of about for a reasonable worth. And, yeah, I support just leaving it as it is, not changing it.
Sir?
Leading me, Steve. Steve Rupaker. So I think it's important for those that are attendants to just try to, what is the current ordinance right now as far as the maximum permitted density in the R2? Do we have?
You're on the planning commission, you can tell us.
I am looking at the other two, yeah.
Five.
Five, right, thank you. So the change is to 12. So that's going to double the density. So also too, Mr. Krem, the maximum permitted height currently right now is 35 feet. So we're going to increase it to 65 feet. Does anybody else foresee the potential problems with changing the ordinance? I think it's proven that we keep the ordinance where it is with minor adjustments, not drastic adjustments. I think there's a lot of wisdom in doing that. If this amended ordinance is voted on, it's affirmative. This board will be responsible for changing the face and landscape of East Calico Township. Right now, you have developers in the R2 district. One came to the last meeting, as Mr. Sherpe told us, came to the last meeting looking to revise this or his zoning from R3 to R2. So it's already happened, the high density. You will be setting a precedent for which communicates that East Calico now will welcome high-rise apartments and lowers the quality standards of construction and design, as we heard from this developer. Thank you.
How did the planning commission vote on this idea?
So the planning commission, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Mitchell. The planning commission wrote down the ordinance in three separate motions. For the parking, for the high density, and then third one was for...
Building.
Building, thank you. And so the planning commission is divided. The planning commission voted down the building plate. The planning commission voted for the density and also voted for the level of structure. And that's how it's going to happen. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Lemon. I just thought, I'm just a little confused on how a one-bedroom apartment with 14 inches is considered to be a median income at $46,000?
It's astonishing, but yeah.
I mean, that's for a couple, you said the whole family income could be...
So the household income, statistics that are available, are median income for Lancaster County per household, not per person, is about $1,000.
So it's from 46 or 48, I'm sorry, what did you say, 46 or 48?
The way they look at it, it's a percentage of the average income. They look at from 60% of the average to 120%. So you're looking, the rent you're looking at is from about $50,000 a year to about $100,000 a year, roughly.
So even $50,000 a year.
People are housing stress.
They are housing stress. You would even have to be, if you could afford to buy a home, you could afford to buy a home and have less of a mortgage than you would pay for the rent. And that's only for a residential. So instead of two or three bedroom apartment, that would look for...
And also what we're seeing in Lancaster County is, like for Reston, Pennsylvania, they're catching up with the desert houses on long commutes. So people aren't able to afford to live where they work. So at the cost of commutes. So, yeah, 65% of the median income, just so that you know, is considered the poverty rate for tax-credit assisted housing. So people who make 65% of that 85% could qualify for a low-income housing. Which is still a substantial family income, but you can't afford housing. So those are the challenges that the county is facing when providing affordable housing.
I'm almost agree that if it goes up to that five or four-story, that it's going to just make the housing development better than that in the city. And it's, it's going to be a setup you don't get.
Did you have a first speech?
I'm not for that.
You've been a fantastic place, over to your parking lot.
You've got a trade-off on the other end. So, thank you.
And that's, you know, again, I represent a lot of communities and I hear a lot of testimony. And the people that work for Hershey can no longer live in Hershey. And Mr. Hershey founded that town. The intention was that the people who worked for Hershey could live in Hershey. And that's no longer true. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Never bear her. First of all, all this talk about the apartments and warehouse. How are these cars and trucks from a 54 B warehouse going to get out onto the Denver Road at that turn? Where will the road go to get onto that, to the Denver Road? This property was my grandfather's farm, and I hate to see this happen, but I'm concerned about the traffic coming onto that Denver Road. We have purchased dump trucks, we have high cement trucks. And a 54 B warehouse is going to be a lot of trucks and 200 facility apartments, like 300, 400 cars. How are they getting onto the Denver Road? Where is the driveway?
Would you like to point?
I think I'm going to point.
Do you have to separate? This is for the residential? And then this is the primary, right? Are they making a pre? They're going to have to span the free care. So they'll, they'll, they'll break the law, basically. And here, you're not going to have a free play because here is an actual, they're going to have to go across. What's happening to the other side of the tree? That would be, they'll, they're going to gate lock plane restoration, basically.
Anyone else?
Close public comment?
Close public comment? Do you think close public comment is a worthy issue to consider acting this evening? Or if you were to close public for another evening, if you're closing your comments, I think that might be a good issue.
No, I'm ready to comment tonight. I've got, I don't think there's any reason to write it from my perspective. I guess from my perspective, I've heard a lot of comments through the neighborhood. The other night was National Night Out, big crowd there, beautiful weather. Good job, Chief Savage, you and women. And women, excuse me. You know, the consensus we've heard here tonight is what I've been hearing in the community. When the applicant was here previously, I expressed some concern about going to higher density. You know, I'm not a fan of that. And, you know, I can't support this idea that increases it like that. Also, when you start looking at the warehouse component, it was just last year that half a mile away, this board turned down a warehouse project there. And, you know, I can't help but think of, you know, that idea here is not a good fit either. However, all that being said, you know, I understand that at Zone R2, apartments can be there. We need some of that in this community. Try and find a rental unit that are not here in our township. But we also have other options perhaps with commercial or light industrial zoning besides a warehouse. So, you know, I guess it's my opinion that we'd like to work with you in the future to try and find something that's workable for the community as well as the developer. But I just don't see that in this proposal.
I know I had said at the last meeting that I was in favor of the apartments as well. We do need it. However, being in the community a lot, I do get a lot of feedback from people. And nobody wants to see a five-story. Nobody wants to see more warehouses. Obviously, I can't do what I want to do. I'm here working for the people, pretty much. They're the ones that elected me to be here and be a voice for them. And do pretty much what makes the most sense. And as you heard tonight, everyone would like to see it remain R2. That's why I asked the question I did. If the warehouse component goes away, could the R2 make, could you guys make something happen with the R2? We have also been receiving requests, well, not requests, businesses, smaller businesses coming to the township on tracks of land along 272. They're not, they're not showing a big massive warehouse. So perhaps, perhaps there could be, I don't know if that's what you're talking about, but perhaps there could be maybe a different component for two or three businesses being there versus one massive building. There isn't a lot of space left where we can build things in the township. So we should grow wisely, as a resident said. To clarify, things that were said after one of our last meetings about affordable housing and what is affordable housing? $1,200 to $1,400 a month to me for a one-bedroom apartment is not affordable housing. I know there was a lot of chatter and people were saying a bunch of things about this particular slate.
They added the apartments up at my end.
But that price range is not affordable housing. I have some questions yet that are unanswered as well from Friday's, what we got on Friday, that I haven't been able to answer, getting answered, obviously. But at this time, I probably like to see it as is. And perhaps you guys come up with another proposal for the board, we can further discuss it. My intention is not to make a motion to rezon parts of the property. We can further discuss it. My intention is not to make a motion to rezone parts of the property or, or consider it.
Mentioned my concerns previous meetings. There's obviously different opinions on places twenty-fourty, but even places twenty-fourty says that they're happy with seven and a half per acre. This is going to be twelve, twelve or more. Height, I agree again with what, what I'm hearing from residents where their height restrictions should stay where they're at because of the appeal of this township in the first place. I don't believe that fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars at the low end isn't, isn't affordable housing. But I'm not ignorant to the fact that I know that affordable, that building, these buildings will fall for that type of rent factor. You can't build them without getting rent that's going to get money. And so I understand what you were saying with the industrial to subsidize often for, if that's the right word, for the wetlands, for the stormwater management, everything else. I'm not ignorant to any of that. But I am not, you know, my job is to, you know, God, man, government. My job is to protect man from the corporation and to look at the future of this township. I don't think sixty-five feet is the future of this township. I don't think necessarily more warehouses are needed in this township more. It's just what I've been thinking and really contemplating as I drive around this beautiful township. So that's kind of my thoughts.
So, Ambassador Board, again, your choice is to decide act this evening or to postpone consideration of acting to a specified meaning. So I would suggest I, of your September view as to what you.
If we want to consider what's presented.
If you want to, he's correct. You only have before you the ordinance as presented. So either you choose to adopt it or you choose not to.
You're going to close the hearing?
I'm closing.
From what I'm hearing, I think we're going to close the hearing.
So it would be a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then the next consideration is, is there a motion on the ordinance as presented? And again, no motion is an action.
I'm not making a motion. Are you guys making a motion? I am not. Make your motion? No motion. The ordinance twenty twenty-four has no effect.
That has the effect of not adopting your.
So not adopting your. As presented.
As presented.
Fair enough.
Again, compared to what has been suggested by some members of the public, if there's no precedent in land use laws, so the developers will come back with something similar or. We thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. All right, moving forward to the. Oh yes, sorry. Take a breather. Takes a five minute reset after that. Everyone got a breather.
Is the work people home, home, home schooling? No, okay, but, but.
Uh, moving on to people that have gone to jobs and they go security with.
John Lawson. And they're going to be one point behind.
I think somebody gets the other person.
The question is, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Hey, take care.
His friend.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, he is. Which is, yeah. And yeah, Dale.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
Oh, look, so smart.
I actually know.
Jerry, you know where I'm at?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I'm putting along a three.
I've seen you today.
All right, we're back. Moving on to letter B, Warwick Effort Trail Extension. I know that you've had a lot of talk about this in the past at the meeting at West Coast Calhoun, was spoken about it at our last meeting as well. However, I'm ready to make a motion to accept the plan for the Warwick Effort Trail Extension only if it would utilize the railroad easement. Well, we have a motion is second. All in favor of a session first? There's already a second on the table. We can talk about it after. Motion's on the table.
Is there a comment?
Motion is second. There is discussion on the motion.
Right.
Indiscretion of the chair, but never less.
So it's indiscretion of the chair. So there's a motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. No.
Motion carries, two to one. Go ahead.
You, you said you're only accepting this if it uses, so you're dictating what the report is supposed to tell us?
Correct. If the report says.
We're not authors of the report.
If the report comes back in October, or whenever it's due, and it says it's going to use the sewer, they recommend using the sewer easement, I don't even have to look at it. I already made my motion. I'm not going to go through people's property on the sewer easement.
Well, neither am I, but, you know, it sounds like you're dictating terms of what you expect to see in, in a report that we really have nothing to do about. Does that make sense?
With all the meetings that we've sat through and everything you've heard, do you think we're going to get anything other than a sewer easement plant? Because the railroad already said it ain't happening.
No, I, I agree, but I'm just, I'm just taking a little, I'm just questioning my head. You know, it sounds like you're, you're dictating what you expect to come back in this report. And I, you know.
So I guess what I'm doing right now with this motion is confirming to my residents that I'm going to stick up for what I believe is right and not do the sewer easement. I will only vote for the Warwick Effort Trail if it takes the railroad easement, which we know is not happening. So we know it's pretty much dead.
I guess, I guess it's semantics that have me questioning this. You know, I too have been on the record. I, you know, the only realistic way of making this happen is on the railroad bed. You know, looking at this in the very beginning, it's like, what else is there?
Well, you just voted number, the same, the same.
Well, I want to see what the report says. You know, we're, we're going to get it. I guess it's going to get finished up and we're going to get a report. But, you know, are we kind of jumping, jumping the gun here a little bit? I think it's, I think it's a board decision. I don't think, I don't think that, I'm not going to speak for Jeff, but I don't think Jeff would vote for it anywhere other than a rail trail either. He's not, he's just trying not to pigeonhole it before we even get a report. I think Jeff's saying, I think Lorenzo's point is, is just like, I'm just making it, and I don't know if we need to make a motion on this. I think you're just making it official.
I made it official.
Yeah, I guess Jeff's question was official too.
The only way I will, the only, don't you know what you seconded? The only way, I, I made official, the only way I will approve Efford, Efford, Warwick, Efford Work Trail is if it gets presented to us to approve it using the railroad easement. That's the only way. That's what my motion was.
And it's not available now to use.
Correct. So I squash the plan that's going to come to us without knowing the result. That's all, that's all I did.
All right, let's, let's just, let's, let's just be clear. Unless it's, the only way, feasible way I see is on the railroad bed and the railroad bed's not available, it's being used. So, you know, I'm just waiting to see what the report says because we're, you know, we're paying for it, grants paying for it. So it's semantics.
However you wish, take it however you wish.
That's fine. Let's move on. Everybody clear?
All right, Carriage Hill, phase three, phase four, security release.
Partial security release has been requested for improvements at Carriage Hill. Phase three and four, the township engineer has acquired the property and confirmed the amount for the release to put forward this evening.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the release in part of security potion for certain improvements made at the Carriage Hill development, phase three and four, in the amount of two hundred eleven thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars, eighty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the Ten Brewers Road Security Release.
A request for a full security leak release has been submitted to the township for improvements to Ten Brewers Road. Township engineer has acquired the property, she's reviewed the request and has presented to the board this evening recognition for a full release of funds.
I'll make the motion to approve no release in four, security potion for certain improvements made at Ten Brewers Road Road in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and six dollars.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have thirty-six Money Creek Church Security Release.
And the security release in part has been submitted for improvements made at thirty-six Money Creek Church. Township engineer has acquired the property, again, has presented to the board his recognition for the release.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the release in part of security potion for certain improvements made at thirty-six Money Creek Church Road in the amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars and sixty cents.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Next up, we have the used vehicle or bicycle sales. I brought this up at the last meeting. We are, we had spoke about the SSU, the special service unit from the police department. And we reached out to our fire companies to see if there was interest. We received interest from two of them. So I don't know what your guys' intentions are with that yet, or do you want to wait back to, did we ask them to put an offer in or?
No.
No, we just asked.
And used one avenue.
So we received the interest from two fire companies and I guess we can have a discussion whether or not we want to entertain an offer from the two fire companies or if we're going to put on municipal, or if we're going to hold off. And the other item on that is the bicycle sale. Bicycle sales are lost and found bicycles that the police have gotten over the past years in our pen. We're just trying to clean up house. We had to hold them for a max of, what, ninety days, chief?
That is correct, ninety days.
And we've had them for probably about eight hundred days.
A lot longer than ninety days.
So just trying to clean up house a little bit. So we have to figure out what we want to do with that. And we also have a digital speed board that the police department used to use, which isn't working, which I was thinking about putting up on municipal, again, just to clean up our pen back there and start getting rid of things that we don't need instead of just sitting around. So if we list it only municipal, obviously it's an option. Or we have the option for the bicycle. Do we have an option about donating them to a nonprofit or no?
There is a nonprofit in the city.
Common wheel.
Call it a gold ticket. Not probably, but they thought that they could repair them to get into the hands of students.
So they look pretty rough by looking at them because they've been out in the weather for a very long time.
Will they even take them or is, is it trash at this point?
They would probably want to see them before they took them, but my son volunteered one of those by mechanic there. They take some pretty rough stuff. Put them up in the. A whole lot, yeah.
More than get trash to somebody. You want different motions for the blower and the trailer? Are you wanting a motion to turn your.
The people who go to municipal are sometimes scrappers. So it wouldn't matter how much it is.
All right.
But they're a pretty rough country.
Yeah, they are. So we'll cook the bikes in municipal. We'll put the speed trailer on municipal. Speed's on. And again, we'll have to note, obviously, it's not working. It needs parts. We're not trying to sell it as a working piece and it's not. We'll have to take our badge off of there because I think they said at least we got it.
Yes.
And we don't have a vehicle to sell for.
Cruiser.
No, just SSU.
Where are we at with the public works truck that's being taken out of service?
Not yet. We're waiting on a quote. We'll probably get it tomorrow. We'll get a quote back to fix the public works truck, the farm truck, that didn't pass inspection.
I thought it was, when it says that was taken out of service. Then the last one. So are we considering fixing it or?
Well, we're waiting on, we're waiting on a quote back from a body shop to see what it's going to cost to get the fast inspection. And according to Tom, and I asked him about it today, it's going to come in our package tomorrow. So we'll consider that as a feature meeting. So as of now, it's just, what are you guys going to do with the SSU? Either wait to see if we get an offer from one of the two fire companies or decide municipal or just let it sit there for a while.
Sure, I can give you my thoughts on it now or are we going to wait till the next meeting? Do you have companies that chance or do you have other activities? I've, I've heard some different things from different companies anyway. So my thought from the beginning on this whole thing, you know, for an intention, we are able to sell it outright to, out to a, another municipality or. A volunteer fire department for it. So if, if one of our volunteer departments takes it, purchases it, there's already a ten to twenty thousand dollar retro setting that's going to go along with that. So any of the departments that are going to do that, I've been sitting up here for six months talking about the financial stresses that our fire departments are seeing. I certainly don't want to create another one for one of them. What I mean by that is selling it to them when they are already gonna have to put more money into it. I'd like to have discussions on possibly, you know, if we're gonna sell it, sell it for a dollar, or just give it to one of the departments, is my thought. They already spend, they're volunteer, they already spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to protect our citizens every year. Out of their pockets from a volunteer standpoint. I, I just, I don't feel right with my stomach. Selling it to a department that already provides a lot of monetary service to our, to our township that doesn't get a lot of that monetary, that money back. So that's my thoughts on it. I know we have three separate departments and maybe we're working towards combining, we're not working, they're working, combining two of them right now. So we can possibly wait till that merger, or maybe we can, I think it's, it's not hurting the chief too much to have the city out there for it now, but I don't know, we'll discuss it further next month, but that's just my thoughts on it right now.
I agree with what you said about the financial burden on the fire companies, but with the current situation, we have three independent fire companies, two of them express interest. How do you pick which one you're giving it to for a dollar or a quarter? You really can't at this point. So your, your options are, you either put up for municipal, or you just wait till if a merger happens and that's what you decide to do? You do, or they just put a, the current two, they put a price on it and make an offer to, to us as the board to sell. I don't see how you could give it to one or the other at this time.
Yeah, that's, that's a little, kind of where my thoughts are going too, if you have already expressed interest and say, well, we'll give it away. But both said yes, so we're gonna do that. I think we'll make some, make a decision. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we've been talking about this, we'll talk about this. We've been talking about our department becoming one department for fifteen years, more than that. And so I've been sitting down with all the departments, I see, we have a chief here, just a few minutes ago, I don't know if you have it. Yeah, sorry, Don, I saw over here too. But I've been talking to all the fire department chiefs, their officers. It's, it's about volunteers, money, and equipment. That's what the problem is. And, and that's where the shortfalls are, most of it all comes down to money. And so to, I don't know, sell it to a department doesn't feel right to, to merge, so for the departments to obviously come together because of those three major woes makes sense for the future. So as I'm looking at the future, as I said in every meeting, if we're looking at where we're at five, ten years from now, I think we can make a decision on where that vehicle should go. The two departments that responded were who?
Stevens.
Well, all three responded, the two with potential interest, Stevens and Smokes.
We're both here. Sorry, I guess we're, I don't know. So, yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, that's just my thoughts, leave it.
So I guess, um, there's two people here from each fire company. Instead of having an open discussion right now, cause that's not how we do business, we'll put it on the agenda at the next meeting. Smokes Town and Stevens, you guys express interest, come with, come with whatever you'd like to say at the next meeting, we'll discuss it at the next meeting. We'll put it on the agenda. Sounds good?
Yeah, sure.
Perfect. All right. You got all the motions, you need a motion for that, you said you don't need a motion for municipal, right? All right, we're gonna move down to letter I, Treasurers Report Interfund Transfers Bill List and Payroll.
Okay, Treasurers Report, General Fund Bank Account List of Bills in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and eleven cents for the week of July thirty-first, and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents for the week of August eighth. Any questions on either one of those lists? Seeing none, I make the motion to approve.
Okay, motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have a Capital Reserves Fund listed bills in the amount of two hundred and sixteen-two dollars and eighty-eight cents for the week of July thirty-first, and two hundred and ten dollars and twenty-eight cents for the week of August eighth. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make the motion to approve.
A second. Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have a Liquid Fuels Fund listed bills in the amount of five hundred and nine thousand dollars and seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents for the week of July thirty-first. That is our, our last payment for the improvement project for this year. So is there any questions there? Seeing none, I make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Street Light Fund listed bills in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and two dollars and seventy-five cents for the week of August eighth. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a Developers Fund listed bills in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and forty-six cents for the week of August eighth. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have an Electronic Payment List of Bills in the amount of ninety-four thousand, ten dollars and forty-four cents for the pay period of July twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-four to August tenth of twenty-twenty-four. I make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's your Treasurers Report for the night.
Thank you, sir. Department of Reports, Chief.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
The Chiefs Report for July of twenty-twenty-four, we had one note, a serious, I consider a serious offense of ours. Stevens' man was, was charged with possession of child pornography after police received a cyber tip in reference to an image of child pornography being shared on a social media site. After a lengthy investigation, numerous search warrants, charges were prepared and filed, and the defendant turned himself in and was arraigned and released on insecure bail. During the month of July, our department conducted a week-long speed study in the two-hundred block of North Money Creek Road here in the township. The average speed recorded was thirty-point-one miles per hour with the highest speed recorded at fifty-two. This is a thirty-five mile per hour zone. Our officers conducted another week-long speed study in the one-hundred block of West Church Street here in the township. The average speed recorded was thirty-eight-point-six miles per hour with the highest speed recorded at sixty-one mile an hour. This is also a thirty-five mile per hour zone. During the month of July, our officers conducted a week-long speed study in the four-hundred block of Main Street in Denver Borough. The average speed recorded was twenty-four-point-eight miles an hour, the highest speed recorded was fifty-six, and this is a twenty-five mile per hour zone. We also conducted another week-long speed study in the three-hundred block of North Sixth Street in Denver Borough. This average speed recorded was thirty-point-three miles per hour with the highest speed recorded at sixty-three, and this is also a twenty-five mile per hour zone. During the month of July, officers performed a speed enforcement detail in the one-hundred block of North Reemstown Road here in the township, and officers issued eleven citations for speeding violations. Officers also performed a speed enforcement detail in the four-hundred block of Paunstown Road here in the township. Officers issued twenty citations for speeding violations. During the same month, officers performed speed enforcement details in the two-hundred block of East Lancaster Avenue in Denver Borough. Officers issued nine citations for speeding violations. We also performed a speed enforcement detail in the seven-hundred block of North Sixth Street in Denver Borough and issued eleven citations for speeding violations. During the month of July, three corporals completed the week-long police officer supervisory and service trainings. Positive training, you will. This training is designed to provide a better understanding of the roles, duties, and functions of a first-line supervisor. We have, we currently have four corporals, and the fourth corporal had previously completed the training, several, completed it two years. So now all four corporals who are our shift supervisors receive this training. I received this training and it's very, it's, it's great training, it's very beneficial. All officers completed the new Taser ten training. We upgraded to the new Taser ten since the old Tasers that our officers carried, those versions are becoming obsolete. The, um, the, the, the company really hasn't monopolized it as far as less than lethal with the Tasers. Um, and, and the old versions are no longer being serviced, they're no longer being, uh, we, we can't get replacement cartridges, so that's why we made the transition to the new Tasers. During the month of July, Sergeant Walsh and Corporal Belongo completed the week-long firearms instructor training. Uh, both of those officers are the department's firearm instructors. They're also rain masters and they're both our firearm armory. During the month of July, we implemented our pink patch project. We produce our police patch returned in pink in our fight against breast cancer. We are selling each pink patch for ten dollars, and all the proceeds will go directed to the Susan H. Arnold Health Center in Lancaster. During the month of July, our officers responded to five hundred and four calls for service here in the township and a hundred and twenty-three calls for service in the borough. I know this happened in August and I'm reading the July report, but we had our National Night Out event on Tuesday. It was postponed from August sixth because of the, the weather forecast was really nasty. It was a good thing we did because the weather forecast held true and we got a lot of rain and some high winds. But the turnout was, was quite a success, and we couldn't have done it without all the, the help from our volunteers, our fire departments, all, all the fire departments in Eastern Cali, it was Stevens' Fire Company, Reemstown Fire Company, Smokes Town Fire Company, the Reemstown Fire Police, um, all the volunteers that helped out, not just that night, but in preparation for the event. Officer Odenwald is, she was our coordinator for the event, she deserves the majority of the credit, if not all of the credit. But we, we had an outpouring of support from our local businesses, and without that, their, their support, we would not have been able to have this event. Again, every year, or for the last, I mean, alibi support from all the businesses in Eastern Cali. So that concludes my report.
Chief, a question for you real quick, you ever run a speed study after speed enforcement in the same area? Meaning, you run your speed studies, find out that we're gonna do speed enforcement in that area because of one of the funded speed study. You ever run a speed study after the speed enforcement in the same area?
We do, it's, it's usually not, it's usually not immediately after, um, but, but we do, uh, we have hotspots, if you will, where, uh, again, just from citizen complaints, our officers on view, um, citations, or what they report. Um, and then from our speed studies, it indicates that, yeah, there's, there's speeding violations occurring again in the same area. So that's why, yeah, we'll, we'll run speed enforcement details on a long time till here we report that, they're, they're in the same location. Because that's what the data that we're getting back is, that it's not, it might may slow down for a couple of days, but then it picks back up.
So I was curious, I was just curious to the impact of enforcement for that week and then how long it takes for it to just go right back to where it was again. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I heard that the officers are planning to move you into the dump tank next year. Any comment on that?
Uh, no, there's no comment on that. I haven't heard any rumors of that.
Uh, just running rampant the other day. You're in the tank next year.
Keep up the good work, chief. I had some public quirks, I guess when it comes down to public quirks, I just wanna say, uh, I told Tommy in eleven, uh, great job they're doing, keep it up. You know, with all the rain we got, normally there's a lot of roads that flood, it was very minimal if any. That's good, keep it up and always see them out working. Even residents out going, they always see them out working on a lot of things throughout the township, that's good.
All right, I think I got it, it was the first time I didn't see how long it's going to end. Could be an every dollar of our FS four minute.
No, no, no.
But you're not, you're not, you're not.
Every little bit.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Go in SEO for new business, we got guidance for new business.
Uh, Tommy, is that, is the roof covered project now?
It is. The bidding closes on the thirty-first month, bits will be reviewed, and the board will consider an award for its bidding. And second meeting.
Could take that, all the targets qualified, it is, or?
Yeah, we, our first meeting was on the fifth, it was kind of short, because, uh, we'll take our time review. And if you know, unless a bill board is made, it's sponsored by Comber, I don't know, our top. If you have any.
That's good.
Anything else? Old business? Public comment, a five-minute per person limit for comment on non-agenda items. Please come forward, state your name, so we can get it right in the meeting minutes.
Boys, I'm Steve Evans, um, just wanted to acknowledge how great, the fishing, great park looks now, and just good news, so, thank you. Thank you, Rec Committee, I'm passing all the basic.
Anyone else?
Logan, Steve Gubaker, um, I've been hearing the board talk about rezoning, um, and changing the map, revamping it, and, uh, Mr. Chair, I think it was your suggestion to bring in a planning commission and have us possibly look for, I'm sorry, it was a burden, it was. I stand corrected, I'm sorry. But, um, to this point, to this date, and correct me if I'm wrong, Don or Alan, I could have, I could have. I don't want him to speak, I don't believe that it was formally brought to the planning commission.
We didn't talk about it yet.
We're calling our last meeting with the special orders to put together an R and P to see how much it was caused. And that's what we are. Okay. For, for a plan. Together, we have no idea what's going on.
Okay. Cause, I mean, you have the commission, you have seven of us that can put our heads together and.
I brought up the idea that, why don't we have the elected officials of, of the planning commission try to come together with the plan and look at our maps and look at, and then Mr. Cram mentioned that as well, that we may, that we may look at it in reference to current, uh, not the current zoning, but the, the land use map. Current land, future land use map. And coincidentally, we're after the land use map, and I, you know, as a way to try to not spend money, which I think we're more than doing, but a way of trying not to spend money, just put it into the planning commissions, you know, and to urge it and have you guys take a look at it and work on it. I don't think there's anything that we, forgive me if I'm wrong, that we need to make a motion to say, you guys go do it.
No, no, I, you know, yeah, I was just.
Right, so.
Communicating back to the board where we are right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's all. Um, also, um, the Kukaliko area regional plan is out there too. And, uh, I know, I mean, I hope you guys made a motion on it, so I hope you look through it, but I don't hear talk about that and incorporating that with East and Denver and other municipalities. So for, for what it's worth, um, you know, I don't want to speak for the planning commission, but I for one, would, would mind holding on my sleeves helping out the township, certainly appreciate it. will mind hole in on my seat and help them out and, and certainly appreciate it.
So if you were to consider adopting a new zoning, you would need to make findings. That decision is post-compliant with the county, the regional and the township comprehensive plans. Now, if we are part of the the township comprehensive, let's say, the township comprehensive plan would call for a parcel to be zone residential or you want to use zone to add. Then we would have to also amend the township comprehensive plan. So that's where, um, if you actually want this to get off the ground, there would be some technical.
Anyone else? Okay. Our next meeting will be September fifth at seven P M. It's actually gonna be at the Smokes Town Fire Company. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Ed.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.